You're telling me.
We're good.
Alright, I'm calling ready to order. I'd make a motion to adopt the agenda as well.
Second thought.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, delegation, just small ones.
Hello, everybody. Um, I've been asked to speak here today by some of our student athletes. I'm honored that they asked me, chose me to speak, um, on their behalf and to accompany them in here. Some of the things they're gonna talk about today, um, well, first I'll address, we're all here today to be sure students have the opportunity to succeed, um, at USD four twenty. And one way we do that, um, is by providing classes, clubs, and athletic programs to suit as many of their passions as possible. These student athletes are here today to tell you about their passions and success, as well as how they see the future of Osage City Wrestling pertaining to its best plan of success and growth. With that being said, I don't wanna take up much of their time. I would like to address, uh, their speeches at the end to close. So, I'm gonna start by calling up an incoming freshman who will be joining the high school wrestling team next year, uh, Taylor Erickson.
Hi, my name is Taylor Erickson. I'm fourteen and I've been wrestling for four years. To me, wrestling is my way to escape and my way to have something to compete for as a teen. This March, I want to stay wrestling, and I would like to bring more titles to our school. Just think, how many girls are really out for wrestling? Not very many. If girls had an equal opportunity, then I think more girls would definitely go out for wrestling. I think I, as a person, could grow up for this sport and having a strong organization to sponsor it would help bring out the sport, not only in females, but in males as well. It's improved me as a person and I think it would improve so many others as well. And this is why I think this sport should be brought to Osage. Wrestling won't grow anymore if we can't bring it to Osage. This is why I think it's so important in our school. We're a strong organization and bringing wrestling here could build us an even bigger name and even more championships. With the upcoming kids in lower grades, we will only continue to grow in size and greatness. Thank you.
Hey guys, some of you know me, uh, my name is Elijah Collins. I graduate Sunday and, uh, I'm a three-time state placer in wrestling. Um, and a one-time, or a three-time state qualifier, one-time state placer. And, uh, I've always loved every aspect of wrestling and like all athletes, that's due to my competitive nature. But I feel in some ways, it's different for me. Until wrestling, I didn't have an effective way to use it. I've never been the fastest, strongest, or most coordinated kid, and I wasn't any good at basketball, baseball, or running sports. But for some reason in wrestling, everything clicked. It was only the thing, it was the only thing that every time I put on the gear, I felt confident. The only thing between me and what I wanted was myself. Wrestling gave me my thing, something that I could feel like I was as good at, uh, as everyone else and have fun while doing it. Third, I've gained a lot of confidence and now through the years, I'm going to be saving thousands of dollars in college because of it. A few months ago, I committed to Benedictine College on a wrestling scholarship. All this happened while doing the sport I love and also going through some of my favorite experiences. For a long time, I thought crying tears of joy was just people being dramatic, uh, until I placed at club state when I was fourteen, something that has been a goal of mine, that had been a goal of mine for seven years. Then I did it again sophomore year qualifying for state and this year when I placed at state. Uh, wrestling has always carried some of my greatest accomplishments. Great Jim Vuvana once said, and yes, I do know that he's a basketball coach. If you laugh, you think, and you cry, that's a full day. That's a heck of a day. And the truth is, wrestling has provided me the most of those days in comparison to anything in my life. It's given me both my greatest accomplishments and some of my happiest moments. From the beginning of it all, it's always been our goal to get a high school team. Every year, us seniors have asked each other, do you think we did enough this time? Well, now I truly feel like we couldn't have done anymore. I feel like we undoubtedly did enough. Wrestling to me is not just a sport, it's also an outlet for me to feel like I fit in. And I feel like all the high schoolers of Osage City High School next year and beyond deserve to have this chance to wrestle at their own town, in their own school, and with their own community surrounding them. Thank you.
My name is Noah Smith. Well, if you know me as well. I didn't start wrestling whenever I was a young kid like most of the rest of these guys. It's something I started as a freshman. I've done about every sport I could possibly participate in. I, um, as most of you know, I've done anything that I can, um, do. And, uh, I love sports, I really do. But, um, no sport is like wrestling. We have, the atmosphere in wrestling is, is completely different, um, as opposed to anything else. Um, it's brought me, uh, closer with, um, those guys over there and, uh, many other people than um, I could possibly imagine. There's lots of people who I wouldn't normally get along with, but um, wrestling has taught me very well how to get along with those people and, uh, how to work with, work out differences and things. We don't have just a team, we have a family. I, I know, uh, personally, uh, my, my wrestling family has became closer with me than, uh, my, my, um, actual family in a lot of ways. Um, and I'm very close with my actual family. I have, I'm a state athlete in three different high school sports. Um, and I can honestly say that I don't, I don't think that, um, I would be like that if it wasn't for wrestling. Wrestling has helped shape me in, uh, many different ways, not just physically, but, um, also mentally. It's helped me, um, uh, have a goal to succeed in the classroom, um, and, uh, keep good grades to be able to, uh, to participate in all these other sports. I also, uh, although I was not a state football athlete, because we're not gonna state, uh, my, my junior year, I played football and, and, uh, I was a starter on, uh, both sides of the ball as well as every special team that I wanted to be on. And, uh, I can guarantee that if I didn't do wrestling, I wouldn't have been there. Helped me with, uh, not only my tackling, but my blocking and, uh, many other things. It's also helped me with my flexibility in many other sports. I'm just getting ready to hopefully go to state in Poville, uh, within the next couple of weeks. And I know that, uh, I wouldn't be able to do that if it wasn't for wrestling as well. But, uh, all I really wanna say is that, um, if we can get a, a program here, I feel like we can give this, uh, this opportunity that I've had to many other students. There's lots of students who, uh, they would love to wrestle, but they just don't wanna wrestle for another school. And I understand that completely. To be quite honest, I, I, if I wouldn't have had the opportunity to wrestle, I wouldn't have done anything, uh, during my winter sports seasons. And, uh, I would've been out of shape for everything else and, uh, probably getting into some trouble. Uh, it really helped keep me away from that. And, um, I know lots of kids who, um, they don't wanna play basketball, um, and it's just not their thing, just like me. And, uh, uh, but they would love to wrestle if they had the opportunity. And so, that's why we'd love to bring the opportunity here to Osage.
Please, one more after Dan, guys.
Um, my name is Dan Willen, and I'm a wrestler. I've been wrestling since I was four. And I have been a four-time state qualifier, three-time state placer, and a two-time state champion. And wrestling, it's, it's a, it's different than all other sports out there. And I can say that from being able to play basketball in middle school and football and almost every other sport is that wrestling's tougher. It's a different type of sport and it's one of the best sports that's helped me throughout all my other, you know, sporting events. And I can say that wrestling has brought me closer to my family. I consider all of them my family, all the way down to little kids. Because I see kids that have wrestled, that I've been in that wrestling room with, I've seen them grow up too, and they wanna wrestle as well. And I think that wrestling gives them a good opportunity, like Noah was saying, to do something in the winter if they're not as coordinated with the ball. Because I, I don't play ball sports usually, and they're not as fast as a track athlete. And they can play, they can do wrestling without being in coordination and fast and strong. Cause you don't have to be like that to wrestle. All it takes is hard work and a little bit of grit to get through it. And I know that in football, we always talk about leaving a legacy for the next program, for the next kids coming up, for those seventh, eighth graders that are starting to play football. Leave them a legacy to come and bring on and keep going with. And that's what I really would love to do with wrestling too, and I think we have done a great job. From before that started my freshman year, all the way up to how we are now. We brought up other kids that have been state qualifiers, that have been state placers and that have learned to love the sport. And I think it'd be amazing thing to bring it to Osage and leave that true legacy to you can compete and have your community backing you all the time. Because like in football, it's one of the best feelings to have a whole community behind you and have them saying, uh, we've got Dan's back. We know, we know how hard he's worked for this. And I feel like in Burlingame, as we wrestle for them, we don't, we don't really have that, because those Burlingame people don't see us in our other sports and around town. Cause we're in a small community, we see other people around town. And in wrestling, if we bring it here to Osage, we could have that support. And that'd be one of the best things for the sport, to be able to have the support of the community. That's one of the biggest things for me wanting wrestling here in Osage.
Hello, uh, my name is Mickey Monken. On March seventh of twenty nineteen, I had run away from my aunt uncle because there's just one more crappy living condition since my mom passed away when I was eight. I came to Osage City alone with just a backpack with some clothes in it. I was in a family I didn't know and at a school where I knew nobody. I hadn't been in a regular classroom for two years because of my behaviors. I was only fourteen, but knew that I wanted to belong somewhere. I was tired of feeling alone. I immediately joined track thanks to missionary then football and wrestling. It was when I joined wrestling that I knew I was part of something that would change my life. At fourteen, all you, all you want to do is fit in. Being a foster kid fitting in is hard. But, but with wrestling, I am part of something that is like no other sport. We are a team, but we stand alone also. When I walk off that mat, my teammates are there to celebrate my victories and to console my defeats. On and off the mat, they are positive role models and I know I can count on them for everything. I've made true lifetime friends and they have made me want to be a better person. And academically, I would, I want to do well so I can wrestle. I'm no longer on an IP. I do mostly well in school and am a successful student. All this brings me to tonight. I stand here hoping that you will make a change that will allow me to wrestle for Osage City High School. I want to wear our colors and represent our school the same way as all the other students get to do. I am proud of the school I get to go to. And I have not had the opportunity to be proud of much until I moved here. I will be a senior next year, and if you don't bring a wrestling team to Osage City High School now, when I get the opportunity to represent my school and my favorite sport. Tomas and Chris moved here as foster kids looking for a family and a place to belong. Tomas wrestles and Chris would like to wrestle next year if we have our own program. Please consider what a program here could do for them and all the kid, other kids that would wrestle if there was a program here. Please know this is very important to us and consider what is in our best interest when you make your decision. Thank you for your time.
So, to say it ironically, these guys kinda left the ball in your court. Oh, you don't laugh when I make the basketball joke, I see. Um, just to talk to you guys about numbers here, I've, we've went out and we've done community outreach. We've looked into, uh, Burlingame, uh, the co-op, and I think we can all agree that co-op is a good thing. After talking with many of you, and it needs to survive. One thing, these guys are trying to get a point, cause that, that's what I wanna make my points to you is about them. These kids that came up and talked to you, these student athletes are eighth in the state this year as a team. That's out of eighty, more than eighty teams, over eighty teams. And that's Osage City, not Burlingame and Osage combined. These guys have set that standard, they've worked since they were little. Next year, we're gonna have nine returning wrestlers and at, uh, possibly five upcoming freshmen to add to that. Uh, bringing the team total somewhere between, uh, fourteen and sixteen possibly. So that's just next year and the year after that, we have several wrestlers coming up, um, the year after that even more. Um, I have those numbers, we can honestly, we've got signatures, phone numbers, and we can get you guys all that detail. The biggest thing is, um, our kids club, obviously you've known the numbers for that, you've been giving them. There are twenty to forty wrestlers a year that the kids club offers. Obviously, they don't carry the passion to come up, all of them, but we're, we're talking about a team of high school wrestlers at fourteen, at least. Um, I think Burlingame started with nine, um, so that would bring our team to somewhere in the twenty-five range, or twenty-three range. So, with that being said, they did also do an outreach to get signatures on, how many wrestlers could we add? Had we moved the co-op to Osage City? We found out that there would be several, um, in the upwards of ten wrestlers from eighth grade through junior year that would wrestle here in Osage City if the co-op was here. Um, I say co-op was here because I, I think we all agree that the co-op is the best thing. Some of those wrestlers, I don't know, I probably shouldn't name names, students' names. So, we have several students' names that we can get to you, um, but that's where we're sitting at numbers. So, with that, do you have any questions for me?
How many wrestlers you got over there, Chris?
Uh, tonight, uh, just, is there anybody out in the comments area? They all wanted to have each other's back. I, I kinda wanted to limit it to just those speaking, but of course, they're a family when it comes to their team. Which is kinda odd because, once you get on the mat, you're by yourself, so. They're one heck of a team though, and, you know, I'm just here as a community member. My son stopped wrestling as soon as the kids club moved to Burlingame. So I'm here as a testament, as a parent too, that leaving Osage City rec building and moving to Burlingame became an issue for our family. So, and for him to go over and wrestle.
So, the kids heard about Burlingame as well?
Not anymore. We're back in Osage as of this year, so we're back in the rec building, yep.
So, it was just like a one-year thing where kids club moved over?
Several years. So Tyson, when he quit was, when, guys, remember when we moved to Burlingame for kids wrestling? You guys weren't in high school yet, were you? Their freshman year of high school, the seniors freshman year of high school, so it's been three years now they've been in Burlingame, four years, so. And with that being said, the next thing that I wanna touch on, we, they have no expectations of who's gonna head this program up, how it's gonna work. That's up to you guys. Um, the equipment, they don't care where you get it or what happens. That's up for the school to decide how they wanna fund the equipment and what's gonna happen to the sport. These kids just wanna wrestle, and we wanna reiterate that. Um, as we're here today, they've asked me to come speak on their behalf and reiterate that to you. Obviously, any job position is put out and goes to the most qualified individual. And they understand that and they're ready to wrestle for Osage City, um, regardless of who their coach is. So, um, we just wanna reiterate that. And then the funding, uh, for wrestling mats, things like that. You know, I know the community, we have a huge wrestling community that backs these guys and, uh, lots of outside donors. I don't know where the funding's at with the school or how that works, but I know we could make that happen, no problem, so. That's kinda where we're at. So, any other questions? So the last thing I wanna ask of you is can you give these guys a direction of where you think the program's gonna go? And what we can do to give them an answer if the possibility, or if we're gonna move that pro, the program to Osage City, what your thoughts are?
I think we've talked about it several times in here, and I think that, uh, there's probably quite a bit of support to bring here.
Great, great.
Whether or not we're ready to make a motion for that, I don't know, but.
The co-op agreement, is it, is it ended now or does it go into twenty?
There's one more year in the current co-op agreement. So it ends in the twenty-one.
Something for twenty twenty-three or twenty-two, twenty-three and beyond.
Can we give these kids something to show them we're gonna move in that direction? I think they've just been given, throughout their career as wrestlers for Osage City, they've been given a lot of false hope, it sounds like. And they've come to me for some answers and I didn't have them. Um, that's where we come to you guys, is to get the answers for that. Um, is there anything that we can give to them today to say, yes, we, we've seen the numbers? We see what it's gonna look like, cause I mean, our sixth grade class is one of the biggest. Um, coming up on top of that, plus seventh grade, eighth grade, we have wrestlers throughout that are really good, have also qualified for state from six and under all the way up to kids club wrestling and are doing a great job, and they're gonna feed that high school program. Just like rec, baseball, or any other sport, um, it's no different. And, uh, we do, I don't say we, cause obviously I just support them, but these guys do a great job of uh, mentoring those kids and getting them up to that program, so. This is their last day walk in these halls, some of them. And I just wanna give them something, and I think we owe it to them from where we're set, so.
So Charlie, what's the, can we move it over now or do we have to wait till the co-op's expired?
That was gonna be my question, is there a reason why we couldn't?
We're not breaking the co-op, we just wanted to bring it here.
So we did do research on how that works. I don't have all the details, but from what we've researched, it is possible. And these guys aren't against leaving the co-op for one more year. They just wanna know that we're gonna move that co-op and that these numbers are gonna stay and these kids have something to look forward to and they're, this ain't gonna end with them. This tradition's gonna keep going, so.
How does Burlingame feel about coming down here?
How does Burlingame feel about coming down here? Is there any, do we know anything about that or?
I wouldn't be the one to speak on that, I don't think. So.
Just curious if we're talking keeping the co-op and moving us here.
So, I can tell you a, a little bit, but I don't think it'd be right for me to, because I don't know enough to make an actual statement on that.
Their numbers on their wrestling team are smaller than ours.
Yep, yep. And no, and the kids club was obviously grouped with ours because it wasn't working. Um, so they brought theirs in with ours, cause they only had few numbers to do that. So. Uh, don't get me wrong, great coach, great program. And I don't, I didn't want to come here today to bash their program at all. They're fen- phenomenal. So, and what they've done, but.
As far as next year, contracts are signed, meets, all that. So. To get in to meets and stuff that, you know, they're full or those contracts are already signed for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So. I would think it would take us a year to, to work on it.
And they understand that. I've kind of reiterated that. It's a lot of work, especially for an athletic director to try to. But I guess what I'm asking you, is there something we can give them that says we're gonna look at moving the co-op here as soon as it expires? Or is that too far out to try to do that?
I just need to be respectful to Burlingame and their program that we would need to sit down and have a discussion at the athletic director level. I just want to be respectful of that.
And I understand completely, yes.
Really go through dollars as far as, hey, what is the equipment cost? Is it movable? Do we need to bring our own? And then also from a scheduling perspective, right? Okay, we've got basketball going at the same time. Who practices where? You know, I, I still need to understand a little bit more about how much space is even needed for things like that.
So, I think there's some homework for us to do, but I think, I think we're all very supportive.
Okay.
Um, I would say we are very supportive. I don't know if any of you would disagree that we are proud of what these athletes have done.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's been, they've been fun to follow and I mean, not watch, I don't really go to wrestling meets, but I follow and I am proud of you guys.
That is something good that came of COVID, we could watch them from our windows.
Nice. Um, but I, I, I think we can all agree, we do, we're supportive of it. We want to bring it to Osage. As we want to be something we can stand behind as well.
Okay.
So, um, there are a lot of things like Kat just mentioned. I think for, I mean, we have to be fiscally responsible as well.
Correct.
We can't just make decisions without understanding all of the, that, you know, we don't have abundance of funds in every avenue. So, we want to just make sure that we don't promise something that we have to come back and say, oh, sorry, just kidding. That isn't gonna work.
Right. And that we, that's what we discussed with them too. We didn't want to, uh, make you guys do that, uh, force you to do that. Um, I think maybe they'll be checking in at board meetings that will be following the process if that's okay. We want to kind of be involved. Um, throughout your decision-making. And they just kind of wanna, wanna know that, you know, it's going that way, that we think it's going that way. Um, cause I can testify for the community that that is what they want as a whole. Um, from all the outreach and discussions I've had. Um, it would benefit us greatly. So. So, we'll revisit this next time. Thank you guys for your time.
How do we create, not necessarily for you, Chris, it's more of.
Oh, okay.
How do we create, how do we create a budget for a program that we don't have existing currently?
Just come out of existing general fund.
We, but do we look at other comparable sized schools on what they, on what they do?
What does it cost or?
Well, there's indexes we'll have to negotiate, things like that.
I understand the teaching at the, or the coaching aspect of it, that, that plays on percentage, but essentially, we're creating a program from scratch. Not really knowing what the true cost of it could potentially be.
I would have to, I mean, whatever, whatever it does cost, it just, you'd have to, you'd have to pull that from existing funds.
But I assume you'll be able to work with the Burlingame Athletic Director through your conversations to kind of understand.
I mean, I think at some point too, the co-op is a joint degree. I'm assuming that we provide something within the current co-op.
Transportation.
And then if, if we end up flipping it to where it's here. Then they hopefully, if they want to continue their side of the co-op, would, would also provide.
But it sounds like it's very limited. It's transportation.
Transportation's what we've provided in wrestling. And, and it's kind of gone that way with us and, and our. Back and forth with co-ops with Burlingame. We've never charged them for any coaching fees for cross-country or. Mostly cross-country. We've had a golfer or two, uh, golfer or two here and there, but mostly cross-country. But their kids just come over and participate like they're ours.
Yeah, as a board, do we need to set an, an initial kind of first step deadline? To have some of these questions answered by a certain timeline? Actually create a timeline to, to have this information, cause it's been. I mean, when Jamie came in here, what was it? Potentially January and now we're at May and we're kind of in the same, same boat. I'm just trying to.
Didn't he just come in last month?
It's two months ago.
Oh, two months ago. Okay.
But I, but I'm thinking if, if we're looking ahead at twenty twenty-three, we're gonna have to get something established by. Potentially next winter or even early spring to look even into the fall. And if we have to create a budget, if we have to essentially do this from scratch, there's gonna have to be a lot of discussion about that too. How much it is, what do we, what are we purchasing, what are we not purchasing? I mean, that all takes time to sort out.
You know, we've visited this quite a number of times since I've been on the board. And we've been in, you know, different positions on it each time. This time it looks like if nothing else, we've got a logistics issue. You know, we don't have the space. We, we've used the space that we once used for wrestling, now it's classroom. I mean, logistically, what would we do with it?
The only space that we have is rec, your rec building. You know, it, it comes down to the rec building, no place really, honestly, that I know of.
There's some things like that right up front that at once.
At, and that's.
Before we visited, while we had available on site, now it's really done.
Well, it sounds like the first step is probably Mr. You were talking to the Burlingame coach. So, we want to say. By, what is it? May, by our July, the August meeting, just have some of the homework done?
Yeah, I would, I would think at the very least, we need something official from Burlingame and their response. You know, to, okay, hey, yes, yes, they, yes, they are in favor of shifting it here. No, they're not. And then anything in between. And then from there, if, if they're good with, you know, for example, if they're good with it. Then the next, you know, what's the next step? If they're not, then what's the next step for us? Do we dissolve the co-op? Do we? You know, walk away from it? Do we continue the co-op? And I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things to consider.
The, uh, numbers, uh, that's always been one of our biggest concerns, just having a substantial program. Knowing that those numbers are stable is a big thing. What does it mean with Burlingame if we're moving over here? And con- contract wise, uh, on contracts, does it matter on scheduling?
Yes. So, as far as scheduling goes, we would have to know exactly what we're going to do, probably in January. That's when we really start redoing the contracts for the following year.
Okay.
So, we'd have to know if we were gonna have a team no later than January, um, if we were gonna commit to something like that.
Of twenty twenty-two to start the twenty-two, twenty-three season?
Yes.
So, that sounds like that's our timeline to get everything ironed out.
Good.
Correspondence. Got two thank you cards. Thank you for the wonderful Mexican feast on Cinco de Mayo Day. We appreciate it greatly. Thank you Pam Whitmore for all the work in preparing the meal for us. Sincerely, Lori Figuring, you went and burned the moon. Dear Mr. Hutton Board, the meal provided to us was absolutely delicious and desserts. Wow. Your continued support is appreciated more than you will ever know as we continue through the challenges. Sincerely, O C E S faculty and staff. That's all we have there. Okay, Treasury Report, switch back down. Um, if you go to the general state aid column, there's a few things. We did get some state money. On, uh, April sixth, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We also had, uh, some flow through to special ed, amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six forty-nine. You see that on the special ed column as well. Um, over in the capital outlay column, you'll see that we had some Medicaid money come in to, that went into capital outlay. That's Medicaid reimbursement. And then if you go down a little bit, you'll see another, uh, amount of eighteen thousand, six sixty-one. That, that's, uh, FEMA money for whole vault pits. That, uh, was reimbursed. We, we went through quite a process to get that. Food service, thirty-seven thousand, five ninety-two from the state. And if you go to special ed, there's a little bit of money stuck in there and that's the cell of that mini bus and it was a special ed. Purchased mini bus. So, that's why it went there. If you go to the second page, um. Noted gifts and grants. There's some TANF money that came in. That's preschool, preschool pilot. Money for three-year-olds and title one and ti- title two money came in. Petty cash, uh, we'll need seventy-eight, eighty-eight for the elementary. Hundred and ten ninety-five for the high school and twenty-five dollars for the superintendents. Payment of the bills, really wasn't a lot to, to bring up. We did buy some laptop docking stations here. For some hopefully new laptops coming from, uh, for the teachers. I was on the first page. Second page, you'll see the bills down about two-thirds of the way down for the Kansas Association of School Boards. Um, we talked about that last month. Really nothing else over there. Third page, uh. There's a bill. We've got the lawnmower, had a, had a time getting our lawnmower fixed, but. Uh, we've had some hydraulics issues from s- there's sloop sails. We've got it repaired over there. Um, let's see. Docking station. Then you see at the bottom, the Three Lakes Co-op flow through money. Back to the addendums. You'll see that we have. In the general fund and that's been adjusted after we got our final audit, uh, thirty-three percent of the. General fund remaining with two months left. A lot of our salary happens in June with the rest of the summer. And then sixty-one percent of the. Uh, LOB remaining with two months left. So, pretty, pretty good shape there. Like that's all I have on the Treasury Report. Any questions on anything?
Make a motion. We adopt the minutes of the regular board meeting of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Approve the Treasury's report of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Refund the petty cash in the amount of seventy-eight, eighty-eight to the elementary school, one ten ninety-five to the high school. And twenty-five dollars to the superintendent. And we pay the bills in the amount of two oh four, seven fifty-five, oh five for May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. And March payroll in the amount of four thirty-eight, nine thirty-three, forty-four.
Hi.
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 I was just gonna say that should be April.
April payroll.
April payroll. I just wrapped up and told me. All business.
Okay, summer project updates. Um, just let you know where we're at. I had a meeting. Dan and I met with, uh. Some of the contractors from McElroy and some of their subs on Monday. They're going to start tear out of the HVAC. Which is more extensive than you might think, uh, with some of that big duct work that comes into that equipment room. And goes over the top of the stage, but that starts on May twenty-sixth. Um, the target date for that, uh, project to be over with is July seventh. Um, the week of June fourteenth, they should have a crane here. They'll have a crane here two different times. One ti- one time to take down the. The big units off the top of the gym and another time later on to put those new, uh, crane, uh, units up. And that'll be the week of June fourteenth when they put those back up. Um, so that's where that's at. The bleacher project, I've been in contact with, uh, a guy by the name of David Sauer, who's gonna come down and tear out our bleachers. Uh, that will be in, in early June at this point. And if you remember right, the project sequence for the gym is we'll get the bleachers out. In time to get the floor refinished. And the refinishing is just a normal refinish. If you remember, we talked about painting at one time, but we put that off. Because it is without the time. And then after that, they'll come back in. And I think it's gonna be an awfully tight timeframe with the bleachers before school. So, hopefully we get them done before the school year starts, but it's gonna be tight. So, that's kind of where that's at. And then we have three elementary, uh, door replacements that they're, they're rusting out. One of them is the door that they go out to the kindergarten or, or by, they go out to, of the kindergarten room. Another one is where they go out to the playground. Um, and then another one is on the music side. And it's just the frames are resting out of those doors. So, those will be replaced. In some time. I don't have that scheduled yet as far as when they're gonna be here yet, but that's, those are the three major projects for the summer. Just for recap what we're doing.
S R two?
S R two. Last Thursday, it was, I was, every time I get on one of these Zooms on with K S D. I, I, I leave in a bad mood. This last month, I had Patty in there with me and I think. I said a few words I shouldn't have. I should apologize to Patty for that. We're going into that Zoom meeting, I felt very comfortable with, uh, all of our S R two application. And they, they dropped just a huge bombshell on everybody that had applied for some projects. And I wasn't the only one that did this, by the way, applied for some HVAC improvements. Our HVAC improvement amount of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight thirty-seven, uh, we found out. They just come out and said, oh, by the way, if you're going to do these things, you have to follow the, uh. If you're gonna do capital improvements in construction with federal funds, you have to follow these, uh, priority lists or these requirements. First time I'd heard that, or first time any of us had heard that, the first one says, and I handed these out so you could read through them all. I'm not gonna. The, the top two or the first, the, the, the top one is the big one for us. Before construction is advertised or placed on the market for bidding, the grantee shall get approval by the state agency. Of the final work drawings and specifications. So, we, we would have had to know that back in. December or November, because we bid this thing out in January. So, right off the bat, we have not followed, we didn't, we didn't do those things. Um, I did call Dean Zeig at K S D about the situation. Um, he stated that the K S D does not have the authority to not follow the federal guidelines. So. In, in our case, and I know a couple of others, they're just kind of out of luck as far as that being. You know, they might approve our project, but our project is too far along to follow the guidelines. So, if we, it's not that you can't do HVAC projects, but you gotta follow all these guidelines in order to do that. Our, our project, and I told him, we start tearing out in a week, or two weeks. This isn't. So, and, and others were in that same boat. So, just felt like there, really feel like the rug was pulled out from underneath us.
Really that written approval that throws a wrench in it all. That prior written approval.
Before bidding and all that, yeah, yeah. I mean.
I mean, I assume we're gonna comply with safety standards. I mean, so.
Well, the Davis Bacon wages, prevailing wages, another one, not, that doesn't always happen.
Gotcha.
So, some of that other stuff, I'm, I would assume that contractors probably know this stuff. You know, more than o- other people do, but.
Is that effective with these, you know, federal requirements? Did they come out and say, hey, as of this date, we need to start following? Is there anything?
They didn't. We did, they just didn't talk about it. Uh, uh, and I, you know, when we have all these fifteen authorized uses for the S R funds. One of the big ones is listed in there and a lot of people have been doing them. And I think a lot of people used S R one and Sparks money to do this stuff also. And they probably didn't follow any of that. I would guess that none of them did. Um, so, it's a real problem. And they probably didn't follow any of that. I would guess that none of them did. Um, so it's a real problem. That money's gonna now, as we talked about this earlier, you, I said back when we were talking about this, that it, you know, it may not get approved. And I I felt comfortable that it was gonna be approved, but even going into that meeting, I felt like it was gonna go approved and then they just dropped that on us. I that, you know, people are dropping their jaws and pencils and everything else, so that's, that's where it's at. So our capital outlay is gonna take another couple hundred thousand dollar hit. But oh, by the way, and that's two thousand dollars or above. So anything above two thousand dollars, you have to do that with. So the doors are also included in that. I had the doors on there for the external doors and you know, people have been talking about placing windows in buildings and all kinds of things. So anyway.
And this is the money we technically have until twenty-three?
Yes. This is SR two money.
The SR two, right?
It's while we have fifteen authorized uses, they're not making it easy at all to spend the money. Um, so there's certain things that even uh, you know, on the, on the application, I've, I've used wording from this thinking that it's their wording, these examples, they'll surely like it and got challenged on some of that as well. So I'm still waiting to see what's gonna be approved on our application. I thought we would know something maybe by today, but we didn't hear anything today, maybe the rest of this week, I'm not sure.
Worst case scenario, they don't improve it, we pull it out of capital outlay. Yeah, I guess in the way the funds work, we could use the SR two money for
Other things.
Other things.
Right, we don't lose the money. We didn't lose any money. What I was upset about is I had plans to I had plans to use that SR money in this way and and if we don't, the only other way to pay for this project is capital outlay. We were gonna do this project regardless. I mean, this was something we talked about two years ago. It's just then we we also talked about, do we do the bleachers? Do we wait on the bleachers? It's a big chunk of change.
And we knew there was a risk. We thought it was a small risk.
Yes. I thought it was, I thought it was a small risk. And I, and to be quite honest, I I was getting to the point where I didn't think it was a risk. I thought it was a slam dunk until last Thursday. So.
So are there any other options here, Troy? Like any other people we can talk to or get the other schools together and say, look, you're impacting this many schools.
And this much money and this like.
I think they know that.
Wait, oh my god.
I think they know that. These aren't state guidelines, these are federal guidelines.
Right.
So it's just the where the.
David May fifth noticed.
I I know that.
Well, with that, with that, they put this out on May fifth, but these requirements are not state requirements for federal use of money. I just think it slipped everybody's mind and all of a sudden we realized it. You know.
What was the dating for the federal program? Was it back last year when they first started with COVID or is it?
No, I I think.
Only been in place.
I think that's always been in place and then they just figured out, oh, by the way, we're using the SR money, which is federal money on these kind of things, which was listed in on fifteen authorized uses and nobody really it just didn't click with anybody. That's my assumption, but.
Can we review like what the numbers are now for like capital outlay and then what what does this?
Yeah.
What does this put us at SR two as far?
This will put us right about four hundred thousand in capital outlay and
After after all the projects.
We have about six hundred nineteen thousand right now in capital outlay and this project's gonna be a hundred and ninety how, what did I say?
Well, we're at eight twenty-six.
Well, actually, we're not because the bleachers are encumbered in in that number. So the actual number is six hundred nineteen thousand.
Oh, okay, so with the bleachers. So that's after bleachers.
Yes.
Okay.
Six hundred nineteen thousand six ninety-eight, but then these two projects are gonna have to come out of capital outlay. Now, we will get some end of the, we do believe we'll get end of the year money from the county. We just don't know how much that's gonna be. So.
So we're right around four twenty right now.
Uh.
Is that the HVAC and and the door, I mean, the doors are like or ten thousand.
Doors are ten thousand.
So yeah, so the, yeah, so we're basically right at four hundred.
Right.
It's gonna be just above four, but I will say, I just said, we are gonna get a little bit of money, we just don't know how much. It could be last year, we got about fifty thousand dollars in cap- in in money from the state. The year before that was thirty, I think. So it just depends on, depends on uh
Taxes.
Taxes and how they come in.
And then the SR two money, is that, is that known yet or is there, is there a speculation if it's unknown?
Amount?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, we know how much SR two money we have.
We've done that.
But it's
Four hundred and ninety.
Four hundred and where did I put that?
And I think right to what you were saying, we have two years for that.
Four ninety-six, seven fifty-nine.
We have time to draw protocols, so.
We can still spend the money. I mean, it's, we didn't lose the money, it's just couldn't spend it on this project, which is.
Yeah, we have through twenty twenty-three to for that.
Right. So it it is very difficult to, they're gonna make it hard to spend on capital projects. I mean, it's not undoable, you can do it, but we can't because it's too late.
Right.
Well, as we moved it back in February, I know my question to you and the board, if this didn't come together, were we all right with our budget? And the answer was yes.
We have them, we're gonna have money, but it's, like I said back then, it's gonna be lower than I feel comfortable with, but.
Taking the.
But we're gonna have to, you know, and we'll just have to really watch the capital outlay spending for a while until we get it built.
Uh, possible increase in state LOB average?
We talked about this last month and just uh, I I get, I put some information out on that. This is just, this is different this year because the LOB average has always been at thirty percent for a long time. There's enough people who have passed the thirty-three percent LOB that it's brought the state average, it could, I don't even know if they know this yet. I don't, it's not even a done deal. That it might bring the state average up to thirty-one percent. The LOB is is basically just like general operating money and the majority of our general operating money covers salaries. So that's where the majority of our money goes. A one percent increase, you're talking of probably about the generation of about another fifty-eight thousand dollars in that neighborhood. But I asked, we asked the State Department if it mattered when you did that. It doesn't really matter, you could do it all the way up to the, you could approve a resolution all the way up to the adoption of the um the budget. However, I don't really feel too comfortable with that because they've changed some of the things uh this year with budgeting. Because uh you, if you increase, they've really put a tighter timeframe on our budget turnaround. And I don't know that we would have time to completely change a budget if it didn't get approved and go back and restart that up. I don't wanna have to do that. The turnaround time is ex- extremely short. I hear something.
I heard our phone or something vibrating.
So, you know, I don't, you know, I just, I wanna.
I'm not a big fan.
I wanna know that going in one way or the other.
I think we have plenty of money around. I think if we're gonna do anything, let's figure out how to cut our spending, let's fix our overtime that we're paying out and get ourselves under control and quit spending money like it's candy and take care of it that way instead of raising the taxpayers portion, portion more. We're in this, we'd be just at basically stating we'd have the authority to match the state recommendation.
Right.
Doesn't mean we have to use it, correct?
Right.
My past on this does not raise an L levy today.
No.
And that's something we have to approve, correct?
We have to have a motion, as I understand it, a resolution to approve that.
Not the, not the approval for the ability to do it, but when we actually make the decision, if we want to change it, that's a different board approval?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
No, if you approve it, that's gonna, no, they can do it whenever they want. That's not a good deal for the taxpayers uh.
No, 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 I'm saying.
Or the school district.
If we approve the ability, that's what we are asking tonight.
Then they will do it.
Who's they?
The school board or the superintendent, when they do their budget, it's gonna have it in there.
Could.
We don't do a separate, we don't do a separate motion, that's what I was asking.
Oh, thanks, oh. I don't think so. I think it wasn't served, they can do what they want.
Gotcha, that's what I was trying to ask.
Yeah, I believe that's true.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to understand.
Is that how, you understand that? That's how I understand it.
Yes, we need to know before we really start. My one hour learning session on LOB did not all seem to make sense right now. Right, right. Yeah, well, yeah. Okay, gotcha. So really, the decision
It's in August, that's the budget.
But we kinda need to know.
I'd rather know if we, I don't wanna build a budget and then have have it scrapped.
Well, currently with the budget, we have up to thirty percent authority. Do you put thirty percent in? So more than likely, if we had thirty-one percent, thirty-one percent would be included. As opposed to twenty-five or twenty-six or another.
Right. We we always put thirty percent in right now.
Got it, okay. That was one, thank you. This has been good clerks.
The one thing I didn't talk about though, if you do go, you you have if you go, if you, if you if you get more money than you have the authority to spend in there, it also will reduce your mills for the next year. That's that's one of the things.
Maybe, because last year, what I was gonna reduce, we raised the capital outlay, so that's not always true.
Well, that's true.
So believe, this is not a good deal for the taxpayers and I, I don't know how anybody could support raising taxes more on tax, especially when we're talking about, we're getting nearly a half a million dollars.
I think that's where my.
On top of that again, and all the other money we've already received. It it just doesn't make any sense.
That's that's my.
And we have to be financially responsible to everybody and that's not being financially responsible when you're doing stuff like that.
So what's our FTEs for the classes that count for next year? Do you anticipate us going up or down?
Um headcount.
We've lost.
I think we'd be, we'd probably be down just a little bit. You go, you can go back to prior two years also. Whichever's higher. I think we would be down just a smidge from this senior class.
Oh, we have forty-three coming in.
We're losing fifty-some, so most likely gonna be down.
Fifty-seven.
But like I said, you can use higher than the previous two years also. As we lose these, and and I don't think there's any timeframe on this. As we lose class sizes, uh with these bigger classes graduating, I think over time you're gonna feel that. These middle school kids that are in such big classes.
Right, yeah.
That's when we're gonna start feeling the pinch.
Once they're gone.
Once they start graduating, unless we get bigger classes coming in than what we have right now. And that's not been the trend here lately. We had that bubble of three classes in a row that are really big, so. But there's no dead, like I said, there's no deadline on passing this resolution either. In is, as I understand it. How you, how do you understand that?
Well, I kinda think it it would be best by June at the latest, by.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it could happen next year, the year after, or any other time.
Yeah, that's true. Oh.
That's what I'm getting at.
I think what the, what everyone's been through this last year, we've had these SR funds coming in and if we I don't know, I don't support raising it myself.
Any other discussion?
Gives me some direction for the budget, thank you.
Talk about driver's education?
Yeah, we, I'm not talking about another, we had a really good situation going for a long time with driver's ed for our kids and that got ganked out from underneath us this year and it was really nobody's fault, but the timing of it was really stinky. Um, so we did, I, London is taking on a few of our kids this year. Uh, they have about five that showed interest and about five more that have five of them that committed and about five of them that have shown some other interest. So we're talking somewhere around ten to twelve kids possibly that will go take advantage of that, but is is this late notice? Um, there's challenges with driver's ed, you have to have certification to do it. We have
To teach it.
To teach it. Um, with that late notice, I didn't have anybody who was gonna teach it and go into the summer. They already had plans and different things, so and there's, I have some other challenges with it also, but I think we can have some possibilities of putting a program together down the road. Um.
Especially with these huge classes, I mean, they're getting ready to be represented.
Mm-hmm. I think it's an important program to have. Uh, my, personally, I'd like to get it in place, but it's gonna take some time to get that done and I'm gonna have to have the teachers to do it and like, you know, they, they're gonna have to wanna do it. Um.
Do you have any certified teachers?
We do have a couple right now that are certified into driver's ed.
Is that something that could be co-op? I mean, I'm assuming that we're not the only small district to have this problem.
It was with, she just came here.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're kinda doing it now, but on a limited basis.
I mean, even like extended past two schools. I mean, what does Merzine Valley do? What does Lebo do? What does Hartford do? What is?
I, the thing is the drive time, I'd imagine.
You know?
Takes a lot of time.
Takes so much of the time.
So if you, you gotta have a, you gotta have instructors who are willing to put that kinda time in in the summer. That's where it comes into.
Cause each kid has to drive how many hours? I mean, it's.
Average is, the average is four and a half to five hours.
Is driver, is driver's ed exclusive to the summer? Could it be a
No.
A year-long program? I mean, that's like a, a class in itself essentially.
You see, I, I know Northern Heights does it during the school year. They're about the only one I know in the area that does that, but you know of any others that do? I don't.
Do they just do it on the weekends or do it during class time?
They do it during the school day, it's a class. A lot of, a lot of schools used to do that and you don't hear about it very often anymore. And you don't have to offer driver's ed, it's not a requirement. Some schools don't offer it at all. It's it's kind of a, it's pretty expensive um class to offer and, but I still think it's important.
So there could be some options for next year, it's just this happened kind of all of a sudden.
It was
Time to find someone.
It would have been, it was way too late to get something for us. There's a lot of hoops to jump through. You have to have you have to have approved curriculum through the state.
Uh, you could do a rule tent?
And uh, you gotta have, you gotta have a certification for this one.
I am thinking there's probably a lot of people that are good drivers that could.
Wish it worked like that.
It has to be, it has to be a certified teacher.
But my boss teach them all once.
Oh my god.
Hang on.
You'll also get your C P L.
If I was a sub, man, that would be the.
Let Nate grow, come out there with a cannon truck.
They, they have programs and I've been advertising that you can do online certification programs through Fort Hays, but I ha- I've been putting them out there every year, but I haven't had anybody take us up on it. I mean, nobody.
Wanna subject themselves to a bunch of fourteen-year-olds driving them around.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a.
Imagine if you were a sub as a certified teacher, I would think that would be a, an easy way to make some money.
It scared the heck out of me if I'd ride, but I know how my own kids drive. They don't have enough brake pedals or anything else on the other side, they're not feel comfortable.
Yeah, but the schools want to do the program, I mean, that would be.
Meaning if you were a certified teacher and it's uh, you may get the certification to do it.
One of the, one of the things.
Yeah.
Why not, yeah?
One of the things I'm gonna, it's, it's also finding somebody who wants to teach the classroom stuff too. So you not only have to have the teach, you gotta have somebody teach it and drive it. And finding somebody who wants to do that is not easy. But the other thing about that is I, I have checked in with Green Bush and you can do the classwork uh virtually um online, so that part could help us, I think, down the road. Um, and that's something I've looked into. It's about five weeks to get that done, which is another hangup.
Can you do the driver's ed without driving?
Uh, no, you gotta drive.
So you have to have a driver?
You gotta drive, you gotta take the coursework, you gotta pass that. And there's lots of state technical license things that have to go along with that.
So is this something we're gonna try to have in place by next year?
I'm sure gonna work on it. I can't, I can't promise you anything because I can't promise I'll find a teacher. But I can promise you I'll try to put some together.
Sounds good.
So if you do it in the traditional summer, is that like a break-even deal for the district, or is it a huge?
Here, well, it's only, we're gonna lose money if we charge kids. Uh, I had it figured out, like, for the virtual online, it was a hundred and sixty bucks a kid. So what we charged, they charged us two hundred dollars, and I would say it's gonna have to be somewhere in that ballpark, and we're still gonna lose money. Because I wasn't even considering the gas, the car, and and the stuff that goes along with that. And that's a lot of money if you pay a hundred and sixty bucks a kid for the virtual, and then you have to. You have to pay a driver, and the going rate for that is about thirty dollars an hour.
Especially at the price of fuel, the way it's going.
How much do they have to pay this year for Linden?
He's charging them two seventy-five. And they're not making, they may not make, I don't know if they're making money, if they are, it's not very much.
Okay. Three Lakes report.
Okay, Three Lakes report, uh. Woman texts us, they're looking for a speech language pathologist, uh, I guess that's serve both us and Burlingame. Uh, so that's in the works. Uh, S R two funds are not known at this point, uh. The way I understand it, it comes from the districts through Three Lakes, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I.
S R one was, S R two does not come from the district, it goes directly to them.
Oh, it goes directly, okay.
I think S R two does, but.
And it's on a percentage basis.
Okay. Uh. And that, there was, uh, something has brought up the need to keep, uh. Special ed services uninterrupted as much as possible, I guess there's a large number of. Special ed teachers that also coach, and it's, it's, I assume it's our district also.
Especially, especially true for us, probably.
And, uh, this is what we need to keep in mind to be proactive in getting subs when we know they're gonna be gone for. Baseball games, track meets, I don't know where we're sitting on that as a district.
We do that, we take care of this, it's on our end.
We're proactive then, it was brought up in the meeting, and I know that.
Out of the classroom a lot, I think that got some attention. If you coach baseball or track or whatever, you're out of the classroom a lot, that goes, that's true. That's true of any teacher, but in special ed, what you gotta do is watch, make sure you get contact minutes of their I E Ps served, and that's where that comes in.
Already, and that's all I've got for Three Lakes. Report.
Well, we're going to full summer again, uh, baseball softball, I've got sixteen total teams from. Six U boys and girls through fifteen U boys and girls, that's equates to about a hundred eighty-five, a hundred ninety-five total kids. Uh, T ball, or they've been practicing, their season will start the week of May twenty-fourth, and then tournament week is the week of July twelfth. Uh, T-ball, uh, deadline was Monday, so far I have fifty-five kids out for T-ball. That kindergarten class next year is gonna be gigantic, so. That's three-year-olds, four-year-olds and five-year-olds, eighty percent of those kids are four-year-olds, so. Uh, so we'll have six teams this year.
That's good, actually.
Thank you, I was gonna say.
It's ba- it's. It's wonderful, I mean, it, it's, it's an asset to have, to have that here. Pool opens, uh, Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, uh, we're, uh. It's got all the lifeguards and, uh, pool staff hired, ready to go, uh, we're working on getting the pool ready, uh, putting in two new diving boards. Uh, and then, uh, cleaning, et cetera, uh, we're, seems like we're certifying every single lifeguard within the immediate area. Uh, we've got guards from Council Grove, Lebo, Linden, Overbrook, Carpendale, Eskridge. And potentially Ottawa, all coming to Osage City to get certified, so. Uh, that will be a busy week for Linden and, uh, her group. Um, we're doing water aerobics again, that'll start the week of June seventh. Uh, we, we're gonna be doing swim team again, Letitia Vaughn is the swim coach. Their practice will be, or they'll have a swim camp the week of June seventh, and then the week after, they'll start, uh, swim team practice in the mornings. Uh, we're taking pool rentals, already got a couple pool rentals, deck rentals set up for the summer. Uh, talked with Coach Gant Vine, we're not gonna do an actual seven-on-seven league this summer. Uh, we're gonna do a single-day seven-on-seven tournament on July seventeenth. So far, we've got five schools right now committed, Osage, uh, West Franklin, Council Grove, Old B and Central Heights. So we'll probably stick to those five schools, there'll be a varsity group and then a JV group, uh, to get them some. Some game, game time experience. Um, let's see what else. I don't know, a lot of fun stuff, so it'll be busy, you know, it's a whirlwind like usual, so.
So you're saying you're not signing up to teach driver's ed?
No, no, however, if I was a certified teacher, man, that would be a great gig. You get, you get an easy, easy classroom, you get to sit in the car for half of the day.
You, farming head doesn't drive yet, does he?
I know, well, she's.
It's not easy.
She's already, I shouldn't say this, but she's already driven south.
Oh, guys, it's heartfelt, you're waiting to happen, my voice anyway.
Administrator reports.
Um, last day of seniors was today, um. Had our awards assembly, spring, or, yeah, spring sports award, uh, awards today, so got that out of the way. Uh, we will have graduation practice on Friday at ten o'clock. Uh, A V Club, they're going to do their last version of Family Feud at school. Uh, I don't know if you've seen any of those, uh, episodes that they've put on. But they're gonna, on the last day of school, we're gonna have a, a live Family Feud. Staff versus, um, the, the reigning champion group of, of students, that'll be ten forty-five in the auditorium, so that oughta be a fun time. A lot of things going on with spring sports, or, or, um, you know, just getting really into the, the main part of the season far as postseason goes. Softball and baseball both will play on Monday, both at three thirty, softball's a Burlingame, they'll play Council Grove. Baseball's gonna be playing at Council Grove, playing Hillsboro. Um, and then state obviously the following week. Uh, golf, they're gonna be gone on Monday, they go to Osawatomie, um, our golf team did win league yesterday, so they did a very nice job. I think Owen won state, yep, very good job. And track, we host league track on Friday, uh, the fourteenth. If you want to come out and join us and want a job, I'll have one for you, so if you, if you wanna see what track's about, we'll, we'll get you going. Uh, regional's on the twenty-first, um, and this will be our second time of hosting a regional, pretty excited about that, we have the perfect setup for a regional. A lot of the coaches that come here just admire our setup and how you can sit in the bleachers and basically see all of our field events. Uh, coaches going from one event to another event, doesn't have to go a block away to get to javelin or, or disc, it's all right there, so. Uh, it, we've got a nice setup, so pretty excited about that. State this year for track, they've moved it to a one-day deal instead of, uh, two days. Um, so I think it's, um. One and two A is on Thursday, three and four A is on Friday, and five and six A is on Saturday, so not all the classes will be competing at the same time. We will compete on the twenty-eighth on Friday. Um, graduation information, um, uh, May fifteenth, we've got baccalaureate at seven o'clock at the Community Covenant Church. Uh, graduation, um, with our, um, rain moving in, went ahead and decided to move that into the building and not risk it. Talking to Dan, our stage is particle board, if it gets wet, it's gonna soak it up like a sponge and, and ruin that stage, so. Uh, we went ahead and moved it into the building, um, I have Jay and Kelly are gonna hand out diplomas. Um, so what I, I need from you really is what kind of a face mask protocol you want me to follow when it comes to graduation? Um, and how you wa- we wanna to run that, um, I just didn't see any reason or any way we can take the risk to go on. Outside, it's everywhere from forty percent to eighty percent, depending on what hour you look at at it, so.
Right.
Um, I need some input far as face mask protocol.
Before we talk about masks, we did talk about streaming it, like, it's the auditorium and the other gym indicate for overflow people.
So I talked to Andy, and we're gonna livestream it anyway, just for the people that can't come or don't wanna come, they can still. Get on our YouTube like you did a basketball game, our A V club is.
The YouTube one, right?
What's that?
The YouTube version.
The YouTube version, and so we will get that, uh, livestreamed regardless. Um, whether we want to open up the auditorium to spread out a little bit, we could do that, Andy said he could put. A pretty quality, uh, piece together, so we could do that, but, um. So we can use auditorium if we wanted to. So COVID protocol, what would you like me to put out there?
Right now, what's the county, nothing? Are we the only school left around here that's wearing masks? I think that's correct.
That's pretty true, I think.
I think Linda's still wearing masks.
We're good after prom, I know we didn't have masks on there, so.
I think.
I personally think it's up to the individual, if they don't wanna wear a mask, don't wear a mask.
I think what Linda did, they had their graduation inside, and I think they were, uh, recommended not required.
Right.
I think it's, yeah, I mean, it's personal preference at this point.
I think at this point, we don't have a risk of shutting school down either.
That's what I was gonna say, the risk of school not being in, staying in session is. Gone.
I think everybody's ready for some kind of normalcy. If there is such a thing.
And my initial reaction is for this close, so why change it? That, that's my initial reaction, it's just wear masks, we just get through the rest of the school year, get through the rest of, you know, activities, whatever it is, that's. That's my first initial reaction, of why not?
I would hate to see an infection happen and we lose regional activity or something like that, and get somebody shut down or for whatever reason. So there, I see both ways.
If that was gonna happen, that would happen, even if it wasn't a graduation, cause they're not gonna stay away from each other afterwards. And they're not gonna wear masks when they're having their after graduation parties, I, I think it's a useless point to wear, I, but again, it's up everybody's personal preference. They wouldn't wear one, I have no problem if they wouldn't wear one.
I, I think that.
But if you don't wanna wear it, then don't worry about it.
I'm okay with recommended not required, and then people just.
Kind of just gonna do one more plug, it's also like, you know, the younger kids, right, it's like they still have to come back to school for, what, two and a half days? Is that gonna cause a problem with any of the teachers or staff, if they knew you have to wear a mask? Your family or your parents or grandparents didn't have to, but you have, so it's just my other plug.
What do you mean, if they come to graduation?
Right, and they see all these people that didn't have to wear it all in the school, and then they come back the next week, it's like, well, why, why do we still have to? Just something.
No, no, I'm, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I don't know, I think it's, you'll probably have less attendees in general, especially if we make sure we get out the live streaming information.
Ideally, it would've been better to be doing it outside, but the risk at this point is pretty tough.
Oh, right, no, exactly, so.
We would've tried everything, if it, if we had any chance at all, we. I mean, it may not, it may be sunny and.
Probably will be.
For all we know, but.
For all.
Be, as soon as we say that, it's gonna rain if we go outside, so.
How would, how would you police it if you're required a mask?
I would not wanna police it.
Would you have one, one-way in, one-way in only, and then? Would you have one-way in only, would you have to have one or two people at the door? Would you have to take the temperature through the mask temperature thing that we have?
We have that option, somebody could sit there and watch the temperature on the computer.
Who does all that stuff, you guys are pretty busy with the graduation.
Yeah, well, we, we get a text message, a picture, if, if there's a hot temperature, you don't have to stand there and watch it, um, so.
But then you'd have to go back.
But you do have to chase them down. You'd have to go hug that person.
Come in and sit down, and then they take it off, is there someone that's gonna actually?
I'm gonna walk up four, four flights of stairs and say, you've got a temperature, you gotta leave.
Yeah, I mean, it's, to me, the reality of it is, is that, that's difficult to do.
It is gonna be, now, it's gonna be extremely difficult to police it, one way or the other.
Recommended not required, is that what I'm hearing? Cause I'd like to put that out.
I agree.
Um, as far as seating then, do you want me to limit the seating in the gym and then require some to go to the auditorium?
No.
Or how do you wanna, how do you wanna do that?
I think that'd be just as hard to police quite frankly, I can't imagine. Sorry, grandma.
Well, you're gonna have family members that are gonna sit shoulder to shoulder and squeeze as many people in as possible.
I have you all, you're not allowed.
So do I even need to open up the auditorium?
I just don't know how many people normally attend a graduation I have not been to, I have.
They normally fit in the gym.
But they fit in the gym, and we weren't in a pandemic, so there would probably be people that don't attend.
Tight.
People might sit in there, it's more comfortable, cushy chairs. You can't spread out.
Or on my, or on my couch if it's live streaming.
Well, yeah, exactly.
So I think because if we're in a pandemic.
Making an option.
There is a live stream option, the people that normally would go might just decide to stay home, so maybe it won't be shoulder to shoulder. Maybe just have it just in case, I don't know how you shepherd, we're full, go home.
Honestly, honestly, I, I think if, if somebody's gonna, this is my personal opinion. I, I just, I don't think it's gonna do us much good to offer another site onsite when they can stay home and do the same thing.
Exactly.
Agreed, I mean, the more I think about it, and talk about it.
So.
I don't know, that'll take care of itself, people.
I think exactly.
Gonna go, or they're gonna, you know, the closest to them, they're asked to probably hold back.
As far as your point, Kat, I think, you know, we'll get into next week, we just do the best we can with the kids, you know. It's, we're fighting it right now anyways, I mean, it's, it's this, it's this awful lot, you know, pull your mask up, pull your mask up, but, you know.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Uh, middle school, we're gonna follow suit with the high school, and we're gonna have promotion inside also. It's based on the weather, and the field's probably gonna be pretty damp and everything, so we'll follow the same protocols. Not quite as big as graduation, but we do have a lot of kids this year, so I think we'll be okay in the gym, so we'll just follow the same thing we just talked about, if that's all right with everyone. Uh, Jay and Kelly got you guys handing out stuff. Um, that'll be at seven o'clock on Tuesday, May eighteenth, so. And I'll get that information sent out to people tomorrow, uh, notifying them of the change. Uh, state assessments, we just finished, we finished those up in the middle school, thought the kids did a good job, gave a good effort. Got through all those, uh, not sure when we'll get those results, the window for those doesn't actually close till May eighteenth, so it'll be a little bit before we get those results. Uh, we'll have our awards assembly on May seventeenth at one in the auditorium, and that'll do, just be for students only, and we'll livestream that also, so people can watch that if they want. Um, it'll spread out in there, uh, then the last day of school is May nineteenth. We're looking forward to that, kids are excited, some of them might already think they're done. Uh, we'll keep them going.
We talked about, my kids don't think that.
I'm sure, so.
Uh, track, uh, we had finished our season with league meet, uh, the other day, thought it went well, got lucky on the weather. Little bit of drizzle in the morning, but turned out to be a pretty nice day. Uh, seventh grade boys and girls both finished in first place, and eighth grade boys and girls both finished in second place, so. Good meet, they had a good season, and we're done, so. Moving on.
Okay, for the elementary school, um, our kindergarten roundup was pretty successful, uh, we had forty-five s- uh, students sign up for kindergarten roundup, and forty-three students and their parents showed up. They all took the ASQ surveys, which were state mandated, which was really good. Um, and then all forty-three of the ones, um, that came to kindergarten roundup also attended the parent teacher conferences. That they hosted, that our kindergarten teachers hosted on April twenty-eighth, so that was very successful, so very, very proud of our. Our students, our incoming students and their parents for showing up and caring about their kids' academic success. Um, we just finished up state assessment testing, A C T spy- aspire testing, I think finishes up tomorrow. And Ames Web testing finishes up, I think, tomorrow or Friday or finished up today, but we've done a lot of testing in the month of April, and we are, just like these guys. We've done a lot of testing in the month of April, we are, just like these guys said, all tested out and you can kind of tell it in my building. Um parents will get their A C T um aspire or Ames Web reports for students um in K through fifth grades along with their grade cards. Um the fifth grade uh grade cards will go home Tuesday with the fifth graders along with their A C T aspire reports. And for all other students, those report cards and reports will go home Wednesday. Um our awards assembly is Tuesday at one thirty, um we do plan on, like Tim said, livestreaming that, and we will not host parents or guests. At that time, but we will livestream it, so parents can at least participate somewhat. Um next school year, we're gonna be hosting six interns from Emporia State, we're pretty excited about that, we do pretty good. For our professional development site, uh Mrs. Geese, Mrs. Stuckey, Mrs. Boss, Mrs. Bergeron, Mr. Strongrumpf, and Mrs. Phi will all be hosting um those student teachers is really what they are. Um wanna give a big shout out to Mr. Tice and Mrs. DeLonge. Uh they have done a fantastic job with our Osage City Elementary School Olympics. Which was very different than our original field day, um they've done a lot of events over uh several days. Um I think the most of the kids have thought that the events are pretty fun. And the big thing is that it really did center around a lot of teamwork, so hopefully we'll continue to do that in the future. Um our summer stars program is doing really well, um I think I gave you guys numbers, kind of somewhat numbers last time, but I just wanna clarify. This is our summer school program, um in kindergarten, uh Mrs. Garland's gonna have thirteen students. Um she will also have a para to help her out with that, um as long as you guys approve that tonight. Um in first grade, there will be uh eight students, Mrs. Thomas will be hosting that grade level. In second grade, Mrs. Baxter will have eight students. In third grade uh and in fourth grade, in third grade, there's five students, and in fourth grade, there's ten students. Mrs. Vaughn is going to do the reading for third and fourth. And then Mrs. Smith is gonna do the math part for third and fourth grade, that's kind of the way they're gonna do their teamwork. And then uh Mrs. Lomeyer will be hosting nine fifth grade students. And then we have Kathy uh Reed, Mrs. Reed, that's going to be um working with her take flight students, so. We're pretty excited about our summer stars program, and uh that will start June twenty eighth, so that's all I have.
Okay, I'd make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss potential certified positions, certified positions, classified positions, and supplemental position. Pursuant to the knowledge and personnel exception under formal, and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at. Eight thirty-eight with the administration present as requested.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We're back.
Uh, we're back in open session. I would make the motion to approve the resignation of Bailey Griffith as high school Spanish teacher and all sponsorships. Approve the resignation of Luann Jacobs as high school science teacher. Approve the resignation of Tammy Serna as high school softball coach. Approve the resignation of Justin Lee as assistant cross-country coach. I'd also make the motion to approve Kimba McCartney as high school Spanish teacher for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Approve the following high school summer school staff. Travis Blue in social studies, James Bellinger in math, Carly Spicer in math, Luann Jacobs in science, Dustin Stecky in English, Kathy Camarino as coordinator. Approve Lacy Glover as elementary summer school parent. Approve Leslie Harmon as head girls golf coach for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Approve the recommended certified staff contract for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Got approval of recommended classified at will agreements for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Second, aye.
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 (laughing)
Uh, believe this one first, right?
Yeah.
What was this one on, like, you got it?
Negotiations, just read it the way it was, yeah.
So I'd move to go into executive session to discuss negotiation topics. Pursuant to the exception for employer employee negotiations, the undercoming open meeting will resume in the board meeting at eight fifty with administration present.
Second, aye.
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 I'll get the motion when it comes in. Okay. Hmm.